I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening. Tonight, it's Ms. Shara Hamler, formerly a prosecutor and assistant state attorney here in Charles County. She's now attorney for Alexander and Cleaver Law Firm. She is also a chairwoman of the BACC. Shara is joined tonight by timekeeper, Mr. John Flatley. He is the owner-operator of Chick-fil-A in La Plata and serves on both board of directors, not only at the BACC but the La Plata Business Association as well. This evening, John's going to have visual cue cards. The blue card will indicate a 30-second warning. The yellow card will indicate a 10-second warning, and the red sign with an audible signal will signify that time's up. Also this evening, if we can hold our applause, with the exception of opening and closing remarks, if we can hold our applause in between the questioning, it will make the length go by just a little bit faster, and we may even get out of here in time for a low football game. Tonight's format's going to be as follows. Each candidate will be given three minutes to open, make an opening statement. The choice of who goes first has been decided by a coin toss. Therefore, I believe, Mr. Robinson, you will open first. Then we will go into a question-and-answer period. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. The one answering the question first will have a one-minute rebuttal opportunity at the end of each question. Immediately following these Q and A, each participant will be given three minutes to make a closing statement to the audience. Both candidates were provided 14 potential debate questions, and they were selected. Questions were selected by the Business Alliance of Charles County and the La Plata Business Association. With that, Madam Moderator, I believe, Mr. Robinson, please win the coin toss and the floor, George.
Mr. Lawler won the coin toss, but Mr. Robinson is opening.
He opted to kick. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the Business Alliance of Charles County as well as the La Plata Business Association for hosting this event, but most importantly, I want to thank all of you. What a great turnout. I think Mr. Lawler and I should be flattered that I believe this is the only debate in a district commissioner race, so I think it's a great opportunity for everyone in this room to get to know the two candidates. You know, as I look out over this room, I feel like I'm looking at half my Facebook page. And that brings me to what I have tried to accomplish as a commissioner for the past four years. I vowed to be open, accessible, and transparent, and I've done that not only through social media, but I've also held 50 town halls over the four years that I have served as district one commissioner. And getting back to the social media, I'm also known in some circles for alerting county residents to weather and other emergency situations, and that goes to some of my accomplishments. As we all know, Charles County has no shortage of dramatic weather, and we've also had other dramatic incidents that happened in and around this county. And so I am so proud that I played a significant role in keeping the National Guard in Charles County, because you never know when you need them. And they're building a new facility west of La Plata that will not only be a new armory, but will also be a community center. And this comes about because of partnerships. This was a partnership with the Maryland National Guard, long meetings to keep the guard in Charles County. Partnerships are important as a commissioner. You need to develop them at the state and even the federal level. That is why the new campus of the College of Southern Maryland is going to be located in Charles County in Hughesville, which will not only give us a great educational facility, but will also help jump-start the Hughesville Revitalization Plan, long dormant. And also, don't think for a minute that that won't be a prelude to the possibility of having a four-year degree program through the University of Maryland system right here in Charles County. In terms of federal partnerships, we are about to begin construction on a brand-new rail trail, the Pope's Creek Rail Trail, which is not only going to add to the beauty of having another hyperbiker trail, but it's also going to do something that's so important to me, and that is opening up access to the Potomac River for our citizens, because the trail ends at the river and will have a visitor center. And then finally, transportation, I'm sure we're going to talk a lot about it tonight. We've received $50 million from the State of Maryland towards replacing the Harriet Ice Bridge. And what does that mean? It means now $50 million will be spent on property acquisitions to build a new bridge north of its current location and make travel a whole lot easier for our citizens and visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and to this wonderful audience that's here, thank you so much for coming. I'd love to take credit and say that you're coming because of Mr. Robinson and I and take any type of credit whatsoever, but I can't. I don't believe that's the case. In fact, I think you're here because you're aware, the same way I am, that Charles County is in a lot of trouble in terms of where we're going and our direction needs to change. I think whenever things get to a point where you start seeing the highest tax, property tax across the state, you start seeing how expensive it is to travel and the services that we're not getting in return in terms of our best thing for our buck, you're going to get people's attention. You're going to get citizen's attention. The last thing we want to do, honestly, on a Monday night when the Skins and the Cowboys are playing is come here and listen to two men talk. I completely understand that. I'd rather be watching the game myself. But when it comes to issues that are important to us, relevant issues, proper services, ensuring we can afford to live here, getting business to continue to want to come here, getting people employed, making sure that across the board, everyone has opportunity access to the best education in our county. When you start messing with those things, it brings people out. People get concerned. They want to know what you're going to do and how you're going to turn some things around. Yes, I'm grateful to be able to serve you as a 17-year Marine officer and 18 years in business. I think that's the kind of experience you need here in Charles County. And yes, we're going to talk a lot about issues of transportation tonight, because we have clogs, we have problems here in our county, just in terms of going from point A to point B. We'll talk about the economic piece, because that's a big problem. We don't have enough career-building jobs here in Charles County. We should be a mecca for that. FBI should be looking to find ways to come here to Charles County, not try to find ways to go back and forth from DC to Prince George's County, because we have that opportunity here. And yes, we're going to talk about being the highest taxed county in the state of Maryland, and the fact that, let's face it, guys, based upon services we're getting in comparison to the surrounding counties, we're nowhere near close where we need to be, and the fact that we've raised taxes consistently over the last four years. These are relevant issues. But about all of these issues we'll discuss today, I want to leave you with one thing. If you don't hear anything else from me, it's that Charles County now needs leadership that is both professional and servant in nature, because you deserve nothing less. It's time for us to stand strong and stand together and accept or look, or at least hire ourselves, someone that can take our issues, not just be accessible, which we should be, but listen when we get there, and don't just arrogantly suppose that we have all the answers. We suffer from dysfunctional leadership, specifically in our district. I want to see that change, and I'm looking forward to dialogue tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat Mr. McGee's request that the audience now refrain from applause till we're done. We are also videotaping this to help people that cannot be here this evening to see this later, and I am going to ask the candidates to please stay on the stage from this point forward, so that the people watching the video later will actually be able to see your faces. Thank you. The first question goes to Commissioner Robinson. Do you support the current Charter of Government referendum as it is written? Why or why not?
I am not opposed to Charter in its inherent form. I always said that I was ambivalent until I read the document. When the document was presented, I can't support this current Charter, and here are some reasons why. Number one, we just had a redistricting of commissioner districts, and we had a redistricting committee. The current Charter calls for a reduction of four districts to three districts in addition to two at-large districts. Also, when voters go to the polls, they don't know where those districts are going to be. I think voters need to know what their county is going to look like before they vote on it. In addition, what I also don't like, where Mr. Lawler and I are running for office in 2014, the election is a week from tomorrow. If Charter passes, we will have another election in 2016, another election in 2018. I feel that would be presenting a void in leadership. Those are the two highlights of why I oppose this current Charter. Throughout the state of Maryland, many counties that are now Charter counties, it took them several times. I'm not against revisiting this and seeing if we can come up with a better form of Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lawler, two minutes.
Thank you. And this is what I'm talking about when I discuss the dysfunctional leadership. We go on record as supporting Charter government yesterday, but today, all of a sudden, now we don't support Charter government as it stands. Charter government is not the right thing currently for Charles County for many reasons which I'll outline, but first, let me say this, very important. No matter what system you change, one of the reasons why the past commissioners were looking to put together some type of resolution, some type of new Charter, is because of dysfunctional government to begin with. Our budget process is terrible as it stands. If everyone, if every commissioner is responsible for the budget, you know as well as I do, then no one has responsibility for the budget. And the Charter made an attempt to fix this. The problem, though, is it created too much of a totalitarian government of all power being sucked up into one individual. That's the problem with the current Charter government as it stands, and it takes the power away from our first responders at AMS to be able to take the funds that they raise through the imposed taxes and be able to prepare for the future, whether it's in buying fire trucks, whether it's in taking care of their retirement, whatever the case may be, which they should be able to continue to do. But no matter what system that you put in place, Charter or otherwise, if you don't have sound leadership, it doesn't matter how good or bad the system is, it's destined to fail. We need better leadership here in Charles County, specifically here in District One. Do I support Charter as it stands? I do not, for the reasons outlined. Do I believe that our system is dysfunctional? Yes, I do, but let's get good leadership in there first.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, one minute, if you like.
I agree that, in addition to the reasons that I stated, that I'm very uncomfortable with giving too much power to a county executive. I think that separation of powers is a good thing, but I think, again, the county executive as it is presented in the current Charter is too strong, and then doing a very serious weakening of the council members. I think, you know, as a commissioner, we don't make a whole lot of money, nor should we. But the current Charter suggests that we make, or the council members, make even less, and that worries me about who we would attract to run for those positions of leadership here in the county, and I think it would present a very weak council and a too-strong county executive.
Thank you. Second question goes to Mr. Lawler first. Charles County has some of the highest taxes in the state. Do you think they should be lowered, and if so, what is your plan to reduce them without impacting services?
Without question. Not only can we find a way to reduce the current tax structure as it stands, but we can do a much better job in terms of services that we're currently not getting. But folks, here's where it starts, and let's talk about these numbers. Over the past four years, we've increased our spending by 16%. That equates to about $50 million in additional revenue spending that we've increased over four years. Here's my question for you. Are we getting better services than our neighbors? Have you seen your services get better with a $50 million increase? Like you and your families, you should expect for your government to prioritize its spending. We ought to be held accountable for every penny, every penny, that you all send to us here in La Plata. We can and must do a better job. We have to find a way to balance, ratio balance, both our residential and commercial growth, and we can do that. We have to require that we follow a comprehensive plan as it stands and stop modifying. If we can bring more commercial business into our county, we can afford the growth of residential growth that we're currently having and create the right tax structure for us to do so. We do a failing job in terms of marketing our wonderful county. We don't do a good job there. I don't throw that at economic development, quality of this team, we're doing the best they can with what they have. But we can do a better job in partnership. This is what you should expect from your commissioner, partnership with economic development and going outside of our county, maybe even outside of our state and region, and having conversations with current executives and saying, "Why don't you bring your satellite offices or bring your companies here to Charles County? Let's find a way to make this thing work without sacrificing our environmental obligations or our quality of life."
Well, I will offer a rebuttal on several of what Mr. Lawler, several points Mr. Lawler made. We cannot reduce taxes without having a horrible effect on our services. There's no question, our taxes are too high, but there's a reason for that. A generation of poor land use planning has put us in the situation that we are in today. I think most of you know that for every dollar of property taxes that the county receives, we spend $1.36 in services. That's a no-win situation. We need to figure out how to grow, because we will grow. Growth is inevitable, but we need to grow smarter. Now, when it comes to economic development and as it relates to this, and Mr. Lawler mentioned the comprehensive plan and not mess with it, well, it is state law that we mess with it every six years. Here in Charles County, it's taken us a little longer than six years to get a new comprehensive plan, but actually, we're now on the right step after a very divisive period of a couple of years. Economic development, this Board of Commissioners almost instantaneously, upon taking office in 2010 or early 2011, reinstituted the Department of Economic Development. One of the most short-sighted things that was done prior to us getting there was eliminating it, especially in a time of recession. It's when things are bad that you do need to market, that you do need to have folks out on the street. And things don't happen overnight, but I can tell you that we have turned a corner in terms of losing businesses and beginning to attract them. And there are many things on, you know, we listened to several speakers at the Economic Summit last week, and we heard that there are things on the horizon, some things you can talk about, some things you can't. I plan on speaking to some of those that I'm allowed to tonight to let you know that we have a pretty bright future when it comes to economic development and tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. One minute, Mr. Lawler.
I'll just use Mr. Robinson's words, a very divisive past four or five years. I think he said divisive was certainly the word you used that speaks to dysfunctional government and dysfunctional leadership. I've talked to budgeting and planning. I went by and sat down with the department head. He's told me, and this is important for you to understand, we do not have to sacrifice our services and continue to raise taxes every year in Charles County. Now, this is what our higher government officials here in this state, excuse me, in this county, have told us. We can find a way to go to zero-based budgeting and ensure every department that we have is held accountable to every penny they spend, which they are welcome to. But when you have divisive leadership that cannot come together, but instead they find ways to finger-pointing and literally get wrapped up into character assassinations, how will anything get done? I say enough is enough.
Next question goes to Commissioner Robinson. The current ballot includes a proposed constitutional amendment to restrict transportation funds to transportation projects. Do you agree with this proposition?
Absolutely. We've had bad experiences in the past where the Transportation Trust Fund was raped, for lack of a better word, during the height of the Great Recession. For us to be able to implement transportation improvements, and those transportation improvements could be the upgrade of 301, the plan to eliminate the intersection of 301 and 228 Business 5, turning it into an interchange, will go a long way towards alleviating our transportation issues here. Light rail comes under the same umbrella, and for all of these projects to move forward, we need to be confident that the state is not collecting the funds, and then something comes up and they give it away. I think the term that's been used is putting a lockbox on it, and I support that wholeheartedly because it's the only way that not only Charles County, but because so many of our residents commute outside the county, it's very important that we know that improvements are taking place in Prince George's County, along Route 210, along Route 5, as well as coming into the county from Calvert and St. Mary's. So the short answer, that was the long answer, but the short answer is yes, that's important.
Thank you. Mr. Lawler, two minutes.
Only in government do you ever get a question that asks you, "Should you spend money collected in its desired purpose instead of taking and spending it elsewhere?" Only in government does that question ever come. Of course, I support that. But even more so, we need to get our transportation funds back from the State House. We need to work with our state delegates and our incoming governor, whoever that may be, in their administration, to see all they can, several of them running on the campaign trail that are running for governor. The two have both stated that they would work hard to give those transportation funds back to our counties that they took, that they took in times past. We need to get those back, especially here in Charles County. We have a robust transportation infrastructure, but it's currently struggling. There's a transportation question that's going to come here in the future where I helped to show you that living and working and playing here in Charles County is a transportation strategy. I'm looking forward to talking that through with you. But yes, the short answer is, the way money is brought in and collected, if you have given your taxpayer dollars for transportation, then they should go to transportation, period.
Mr. Robinson, one minute.
Transportation is the lifeline of this county, and in terms of economic development, if our roads aren't good, if our mass transit isn't good, then everything comes to a crawl. And as I mentioned, looking outside the county, we see what happened just north of the county line of Brandywine with very poor planning with that new shopping center there. So it comes down to planning as well and having a partnership with the state. And it doesn't matter who the governor of the state is, you're really dealing with staff, and you're dealing with the Secretary of Transportation, you're dealing with the Secretary of Planning, and I'm very proud of the relationships that I've developed with the current team that's up there. And if I'm fortunate enough to spend the next four years representing you, that's the first thing I did four years ago, it's the first thing I'll do now. Go up to Annapolis and shake hands and make sure everyone knows we are Charles County and we're important.
Thank you. Next question to Mr. Lawler. If, by one measure, 70% of residents commute out of the county to work each day, if elected, what would be your short-term strategy to improve the county's transportation network, and how would you fund your plan?
You must be a plant. I asked for that question. Thank you so much. Without, she is not, that was a joke. Without question, listen, building a county where we can work, live, and play right here in our county is a transportation strategy. We have to do a better job building those types of communities here in our county. How do we do that? Number one, I propose that we look to, with all of the office buildings we have available in and around Waldorf and La Plata, why not create government hubs and business hubs? Where folks that normally travel outside of our county, 17%, by the way, just for general services, and they go into Washington, DC. A cubicle is no different in DC than it could be right here in Waldorf. Wouldn't it be nice to hop in your car and drive five minutes to work and then five minutes back home and get paid the same salary you're getting paid today? We can do things like that and go above and beyond to keep people right here in Charles County. We can create secret, or what I call classified or unclassified notes within those compartments so they can have their, so that citizens or government officials or government employees can deal with those secret issues and those clearance issues right there in their cubicles, right here in La Plata or right here in Waldorf. These are things we can do. There's no question that we need to find additional corridors, built or otherwise, so we can have corridors that go outside of our county and the surrounding regions, more so than the two or three that we currently have. But the short-term solution, let's get people off of roads today. Let's engage in conversations with general services and other government agencies and convince them to allow satellite offices to be proposed right here in our county. I say we could have done this a long time ago. This will take transportation off of roads and will build more friendlier, workable, playable communities and a better infrastructure all the way around.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, two minutes.
I'm going to answer your question directly, which was, short-term, how do we solve some of our transportation problems? We've only heard about the controversies concerning the Cross County Connector, the road that is now dead. I make no mistake about it, it is dead. But in my research of looking through the files, I came across a memo from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that was written to county commissioners in 2009 when they were leaning towards not approving this road, and they had a suggestion. And their suggestion was a better alternative was to add a lane in each direction on Route 228 between Waldorf and Maryland 210. Now, we did a study that turned out to be unsuccessful in terms of adding bus-on-shoulder lanes on Route 5. However, Route 210 is an option for that, and if we listen to what the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers told us, and we work with the state highway administration, we can solve two things at once as it relates to bus transit. That is, we can increase the lanes on 228 for the seven and a half miles that it runs from Waldorf to 210, and at the same time, create the bus-only lanes that can run from Waldorf all the way up to the Beltway. That's a short-term solution. I mentioned the interchange in Waldorf. I can tell you that because of the casino that's being built at National Harbor, there are going to be three traffic lights that are going to be eliminated in the northern part of Route 210 just prior to reaching National Harbor, and that's called the Waldorf Urban Redevelopment Corridor. And that is giving Waldorf a sense of place, a walkable, livable, mixed-use community with transit that will allow people to work and play and live in one place. And the way we are going to attract businesses and others to come here is by offering tax incentives. And so I look around the county and see this is a blueprint for redevelopment. We all know we have some very blighted areas in the county, along the 301 corridor, certainly in the town of Indian Head, and we can use the work as a blueprint. I had a situation where I approached a four-year university in Washington, DC about locating here, following the approval of the casino at MGM, to possibly offer casino management. There was very tepid interest in it, until I came back to them with the blueprint for this Waldorf Urban Redevelopment Corridor. GW is an urban university. They only want to be located in walkable communities. This is something that can be very exciting for Charles County, but my mantra is going to be redevelopment, because we can spend a generation redeveloping before we would have to cut a single tree down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler. Two minutes.
Thank you. This is certainly a clear difference between me and my opponent for you all. If you like where we've been for the past four years, then he's your guy, without question. And I'm not. We need something completely different, completely radical than the status quo that we currently have. Yes, we need more commercial business. Why? Because that will help ease the burden where it comes to the residential growth that we have in the county, but even more so than that, we need to make it easier for you all to stay here, easier for our business to stay here. We need to cut the tax rate without question immediately. We also need to look at excessive regulations and rules that are keeping business from wanting to grow here, and even our current business environment that wants to stay here. Listen, folks, anytime that we can entertain conversations or disagreements about balloon sizes that hang from development properties or even hang from mailboxes, we have a problem here in our county. I do not agree with the status quo whatsoever. We can and deserve a better economic environment here in Charles County. How do we do that? In some cases, your commissioners need to get outside the four walls of our county. We need to go talk to other business owners outside of our county, within our region. We need to do a better job redeveloping our infrastructure here and keep our current business community here. I think far too long, so many in our business community and our chambers have been so concerned about speaking up because they don't want to rub people the wrong way, because it just adds to more regulation, more excessiveness. It is out of control. So I stand for re-establish or rebuilding or developing a better commercial business base. Get rid of the excessive regulations. Let's realize that we can do more by bringing career-building jobs here to Charles County than anything else that we could do, ensuring, of course, that we maintain our environmental standards across the board.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, one minute.
Mr. Lawler began by saying we can cut taxes immediately across the board. I would suggest that anyone look at the very Republican state of Kansas and see what has taken place there. You cannot cut taxes without consequences. We have an excellent school system. We have an excellent sheriff's office. We have excellent county staff. The infrastructure in this county is always being upgraded, whether it's water and sewer or roads. It's just irresponsible to make a statement that you can just cut taxes and everything's going to trickle down. We haven't seen that work since the days when George H.W. Bush called it voodoo economics, and that's what it is. Thank you.
Mail it, George. Thank you. Next question goes to Mr. Lawler. Describe your ideal comprehensive plan or mapping for Charles County. Two minutes.
Let me start off by saying that, that yes, economic vitality is important. It can only come through commercial growth. And yes, as I stated earlier, at the beginning of my comments, I had a conversation with budgeting and planning. We do not have to continue to increase taxes to maintain our quality of life or our standards. I am not here to discuss a Republican view or Democrat view. I'm here to discuss the view for Charles County citizens. I'm hoping that we can embark on that kind of conversation because that is what it has to be about. Comprehensive plan has got to involve every leader within our county from the business community, utilities, all the way across the board. If we're going to talk comprehensive plans specifically going forward, then every stakeholder needs to take place in that conversation. The type of dysfunction we currently have is not giving way to that. We're not having these kinds of conversations. Instead, in some cases, it's one-on-one where even many of our developers have to go around, just around the current leadership, just to tap into hired government employees here in Charles County. That's not the way to do it. The way to do it is to sit people down, to have a conversation about growth. Point out planned economic growth nodes in our county and let's make sure that all of our services, all of our attention is geared toward that area. And then ensure we do it in a pattern and a stepway that again, does our environment no harm, allows for proper planned growth that we planned, and brings everybody to the table. Listen, when everyone comes to the table for my last 30 seconds, everyone won't be happy, but everyone will at least have a voice.
Mr. Robinson, two minutes.
One of the last things that the previous board of commissioners did before the current board took office was create how the new comprehensive plan would be developed. And looking back, I can say that was probably the greatest thing the previous board of commissioners did. It was open, it was transparent, it invited every stakeholder with meetings or called charrettes or some called them charays over a period of months. And so many people got engaged and involved. And then county staff came up with a few different scenarios. There was one that some people thought was too developer-friendly. There was another that was considered to be too environmentally friendly. And ultimately, emerged scenario existed. Not everybody was happy, not everybody was upset. We were moving in that direction when frankly, that project and that system and that process was hijacked by the developer community to the point where the map that was considered by the planning commission was written by developers. Obviously, it created a lot of controversy, concern, citizen outrage, and it went on and on and on. And simultaneously, we were required by Senate Bill 236 to create tier maps. And the tier maps had to work hand-in-hand with the town plan. Well, that same lobby organization wrote their own tier maps, which violated state law. That was their mistake because that allowed those of us in the minority to play a significant role to getting this right. And I'm happy to say that after more than two years, we have an approved tier map that I'm very happy with, which will have a mirrored comprehensive plan that will be very similar to the merge scenario. It's unfortunate that the process was hijacked. We're fortunate we're going to have a very good comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, that plan won't get back to the next board of commissioners until September of 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler, one minute.
Yeah, the whole idea of hijacking plans by any community, development, education, law enforcement or otherwise, they're not the elected officials. Let's stop passing responsibility. The buck stops with the, with the board of commissioners and the dysfunctional leadership that currently exists. It's completely out of control. Here's the bottom line, balanced ratioed commercial and residential growth. That's the plan. That's the blueprint. That's how you go from where we are to where we, where we need to be. My last 30 seconds, please understand houses under that $350,000 threshold or lower cost the county more in services to maintain. It takes corporations, it takes companies, it takes that tax base in order for us to maintain our balanced budget and our standard of living. We don't have to compromise services. I'm not trying to invite you down a road that's just completely convoluted with developers, know that at all. I'm just trying to get everyone to understand that whether you're a developer, whether you're a teacher, an educator, or a law enforcement agent, you're a citizen of Charles County.
Thank you. Next question goes to Commissioner Robinson. What do you believe is the best use of the property that was intended for the Indian Head Science and Technology Park?
Well, the first thing about that property was it should have been called what it really was, which was the Brian's Road Tech Park because it was not located anywhere near the base. And the previous board of commissioners entered into a deal with two very established and two very competent companies, Vecina and Copt, to market this over a period of several years with kind of a no-lose situation. If they weren't successful, the county had to purchase it back at a very expensive pre-recession rate. Well, my feeling is if Copt and Vecina were unsuccessful in marketing this to be a technology park, the county's not going to be any more successful. I mentioned Indian Head. That's where a technology park should be. It should be next to the base. It should help revitalize the town of Indian Head, not being in an environmentally sensitive part of the county. What will ultimately happen to that property? We are in discussions with conservation groups, with the Department of Natural Resources. We're not going to get the $6.8 million of your money back, but we're hoping to get as much of it back as possible and at the same time preserve land that needs to be preserved.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes, I have a much different optimistic viewpoint of the Indian Head Tech Park. Let's face it, we have in Prince George's County National Harbor, there's going to be, MGM will go up, the casinos will go up whether we want them to or not. We have an opportunity to bring a lot of business and a lot of entrepreneurs right here into our county. What does that have to do with Indian Head Tech Park? A whole lot. Because my view on that is we hold off just a little bit longer while we continue to revitalize one of the only regional airports that is not restricted with heavy no-fly zones as it is down there at Reagan International. We develop it. We continue to see its success and thrive and go up. But at the same time, it'll be positioned for many to use their private planes flying in right here to Charles County. Take that quick trip right down 210, right into MGM. By then, we can create the kind of traffic, traffic to rebuild. And yes, there's something significant with that tech park, which will ensure that your money not only gets paid back in full, but it'll be an investment that all of us will see is worth having. So we should take our time, one step at a time. See where we're at, watch and continue the revitalizing efforts, both state and federal partnerships to rebuild our, our airport. While at the same time, see if we can bring more business into our county via that channel way while we continue to hold on to that tech park and grow it. And let's get our best bang for our buck.
Mr. Robinson, one minute.
I actually think that the airport, the Maryland Airport and the Tech Park are two different issues. I think that what the expansion that's taking place there is exciting news that can be utilized for both military as well as commercial purposes. General aviation in this area has suffered dramatically since 9/11. And this airport provides that opportunity to bring general aviation, small jets and the like to the area. And I can think of no better organizations that would want to locate there in terms of a small distribution center than companies like FedEx and UPS. And they want to be on the airport. They don't want to be off the airport. So I see that as a potential growth. And we thank the federal government for all the money that they invested into expanding the runways there.
Thank you. Next question to Mr. Lawler. An amendment to the county code retroactively modifying who controls pay increases at the Charles County Sheriff's Office was recently proposed. What is your position on this proposal?
That's another example again of dysfunctional leadership. We need to bring both our sheriff as well as our rank and found deputies, as well as the commission board together to discuss these pay increases and their tie to state, to the state patrol, state government. Believe it or not, folks, this has not been done. These types of conversations with everyone together have not been had. The question you should ask yourself is why? Why do we currently have that type of dysfunction amongst our leadership that can't bring the stakeholders together to discuss the best way for us to go forward? We can provide increases to our law enforcement to ensure that they keep pace with our surrounding counties. But we're not doing that for many reasons. And one of which is a budget issue that we'll have to discuss. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to do it tonight. Because we are that, that far upside down in our budgeted issues, which is why there's a lawsuit going on currently in between our commission board and our, our, our sheriff department. That's a problem. We can and must do better. But it takes that kind of leadership that brings people together so we can discuss these issues. Because after all, you deserve a safe and community of which our law enforcement represents.
Mr. Robinson, two minutes.
Well, this is an issue that I have been intimately involved with because I was the only commissioner to vote against introducing legislation retroactively to prevent our sworn officers from getting the raise that they were promised under the law on July 1st. The county ended the last fiscal year with a $2 million surplus. That hasn't gotten a lot of headlines. But we should do what is required by law. And the way I see it is this has turned into kind of a tennis match. We didn't give the officers the raise they deserved on July 1st. The FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police responded by suing us. The county commissioners, on a vote of four to one, introduced legislation that there'll be a public hearing on tomorrow night to discuss this bill. Well, last week, we also had our annual meeting with our legislative delegates from Annapolis in which collective bargaining came up. So I see this as a tennis rally that's going back and forth. We're at Deuce and it's time to institute collective bargaining as well as binding arbitration where both sides see where the books really are at and see what can be afforded without having to do it in the courtroom. Thank you.
Mr. Lawler?
I will take my time on this one. And again, I hope you hear the same reoccurring thing that I hear, but voting for something, i.e. to provide more pay for any group, knowing you don't have the money to cover it, is a problem. The surplus that we currently have, we have to have by law. Doesn't mean you can spend, I think we call that a rainy day fund, doesn't mean you can spend it. The problem is, we continue to make commitments and promises that we cannot afford. Because in terms of leadership, we're not doing the best and all that we can to ensure we're spending your dollars the way it should be spent. Dysfunction, again, dysfunctional leadership all the way around, specifically here in our district. We absolutely deserve better. I could make a promise to you that every single person in this room will get an extra $100 just for being here tonight. How good is that promise if I can't afford it and I can't keep it?
Thank you. Next question to Commissioner Robinson. What will be your top three initiatives in the next four-year term? And does your answer change if your term becomes a two-year term if the charter government passes?
I'll answer the second part first. No, I'm not going to worry about the what-ifs of what might happen on the election as it relates to charter. When I chose to run for this office, for reelection, for recommitment to serve you, the citizens of Charles County, I was making that assumption if I'm fortunate to get elected or if Mr. Lawler is fortunate to get elected, that it would be a four-year term. Priorities, three of them. Redevelopment, I've mentioned it before, so I'm not going to spend too much time on the redevelopment issue. I mentioned Indian Head, I mentioned tax incentives, I mentioned the Waldorf Urban Redevelopment Corridor, I mentioned the blighted strip malls on 301. Transportation, we've talked about that as well. So I guess some of these questions will come back and I really don't want to repeat myself, so I'll focus on my third area. And that's tourism. Tourism is the world's largest industry. And this county is blessed with an amazing amount of natural resources. We are surrounded by water, we are a peninsula. We have the Potomac River on the western side, we have the Potuxin River on the eastern side. There are historic assets. We have ignored tourism for too long. I'm proud to say that for the first time in seven years, we now have a tourism chief. And we spent a long time looking for the right person for this job. And so Mr. Tim Morgan, who is our new tourism chief, comes from having been the director of tourism for the state of Delaware as well as for the Seattle Tacoma area. He's got the educational background, he's got the marketing background, he knows how to brand the county, he knows how to promote the county. The great thing about tourists is they come, they play, they stay, they pay, and they go away. So those are, that's monies that come into the county that require very little of an, of an expense on the part of the local jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler, two minutes.
Thank you. My principles are not election-driven. My principles are eternal. My principles and priorities for this county will not change. I will work hard to ensure, number one, we have economic solvency or a balanced budget, that we spend your money the same way you spend your own. I'll be held accountable to that standard by you, the voter, by you, the constituent, hopefully every day as far as I'm concerned. Number two, transportation. I will continue to market this county as an opportunity for us to have livable, playable, workable communities. I won't stop until you get a chance and leave your arm and drive or commute five to 10 minutes down the road and right back home for 10 minutes to keep more and more of your time, which is precious, to spend with your children, your grandchildren, your family, your loved ones. And number three, unity of effort. That is the biggest piece and part of my commitment for you. Because it boils down to leadership that is serving at its core and that is more concerned about you, the constituent, than any party affiliation, any skin color, or any gender. The issue has got to be about Charles County and how do we reach across the aisles and work together? I am honestly tired of a dysfunctional board that doesn't want to work together, that would rather name-call and rather enter into character assassinations to play one end against the other. After talking to so many of my Democrat colleagues as well as Republican and independent colleagues, I hear the same thing across the board. Unity of effort will be a driving theme for me as I attempt to tackle this whole matter of dysfunctional leadership and present to you a leader that can be held accountable, that will serve you. Economic development, transportation, and unity of effort. And those priorities will not change whether two, four, or eight years.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, one minute.
Mr. Lawler spoke of monies that we can't use because they're for the rainy day fund, which is also known as the general fund. The $2 million surplus is, is from the general fund, not from the rainy day fund. Those money, that money could be used. The rainy day fund is intended to keep our bond rating where it should be. We are one of the few jurisdictions in the state of Maryland that has not only achieved a AAA bond rating, but has maintained it through very difficult times. So we have exercised fiscal restraint, fiscal responsibility. And our citizens should be very proud of that because a AAA bond meaning, rating means that we can embark on some of the projects that we've talked about in terms of transportation, increasing the quality of our infrastructure at our public schools, which is something that hasn't come up yet tonight, but is something that needs to be done and will be done over the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question to Mr. Lawler. We currently do not have strong cohesive leadership in the county. How will that change if you are elected?
Well, so much in, in every way. I believe that when it comes to the kind of leadership that I want to propose, the kind of leadership that I am, the kind of leadership I want you to be held, that I want you to hold me accountable to, is one that reaches across and, and have conversation with you, regardless of where you're from, regardless of your background, those things are important. And I think that we lack that. In fact, I know that we lack that. We can do a better job not just reaching out to individual citizens and working together on our boards, but also reaching across county, region lines. And I've talked about that before. But in order to get there, we're going to have to get beyond where we are now. And where we are now is just, again, constant mudslinging, back and forth. Listen, I've been around this state more times than I care to count. And I can tell you firsthand, from my ears to you, or from my lips to your ears, I hear it all the time, how dysfunctional Charles County is. It's time for us to reintroduce Charles County back to Maryland and show them that we can not only grow and get stronger as a county and be a mecca for successful citizens and businesses and education and academic excellence, but we can do so in a professional way. That's the kind of comprehensive leadership I would like to bring. It's all-encompassing. It's about accountability. And for me, it starts with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson, two minutes.
I think everyone in this room knows about what's being described as the dysfunctionality of the past four years. I'm happy to say that I have done my best to stay above the fray, but there's a, there's an inherent problem with our problem with our current Code Home rule that can be fixed without changing the form of government. Someone found a loophole that determined that the responsibilities of the commissioner president are not clearly defined. So if I'm fortunate enough to not only be reelected but fortunate enough to serve with a new commissioner president, who I hope will be Peter Murphy, I know that we need to define the role of the commissioner president, that that person is the leader of the Board of Commissioners. We need to rescind that resolution, that strict power, and change the tone. And no one I know can change the tone better than Mr. Murphy, and I know that my behavior over the past four years has not been to play in the mud, to not make accusations about my colleagues. And I think we can move forward and change the reputation of Charles County because if we have a former state delegate running this county, that in itself sends a message that that gentleman cared enough to come home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawler.
I'd like to use my minute to discuss one important fact about comprehensive leadership, where I think this question was leading in the first place, outside of my earlier comments. Example means that you tell the truth, that you're honest with people, that you confront the issues head-on. With that said, I want to ask you a very difficult question that only you can answer. If we have exercised that type of leadership, which my opponent claims he has, why have we raised taxes every year in four years? Why have we increased the size of government by $50 million with nothing to show for it? Why hasn't it increased by 16% over four years? And why in the world has my opponent said, quote, "In the Maryland Independent, I intend to increase even more taxes in the future," and then stand in front of you and say that I exercised fiscal restraint? I just want to be honest in that assessment. That's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude the question and answer portion of the debate. As a result of the coin toss, Commissioner Robinson will be doing his closing statement first.
Again, thank you all so much for being here. I think it means a lot to both the candidates up here that we got such a wonderful turnout of citizens. It means despite hearing that there's so much apathy, maybe there isn't and maybe the message is getting across. I'm looking at it in the room, and I see a lot of other folks who are running for office, and I can tell you that running for office is no easy task, and I thank Mr. Lawler for stepping up to run in my opposition to me, and he knows very well that it's not easy to run for office. And I also want to take this opportunity that running for office is performing a true public service. I've had a very diverse professional background in my life, exciting at times, but nothing has been more important than serving the citizens of Charles County. It's been said that the district commissioner jobs are part-time. I have never treated it as such. Charles County is on my mind 24/7, and that's why the accessibility and transparency were so important to me. Now, I'm running as an incumbent. I have a record. You can determine whether or not you like my record or not. But after four years, I'm pretty proud that I have received endorsements from a very diverse group of organizations within the county: the Education Association of Charles County, the teachers, the Fraternal Order of Police, the sworn officers, the Sierra Club, the environmental community, the two media companies in the county, the BayNet and the Maryland Independent. Endorsements are great, but without the endorsement of a majority of Charles County citizens, they all mean nothing. So I respectfully ask for your vote so that I can serve another four years representing you, the great citizens of this county. Thank you.
Mr. Lawler, three minutes.
Thank you. I know I'm the sole individual or voice that stands between you and a good skids game, so I'm going to do all I can to wrap this up as quickly as I can, but not without thanking you. I appreciate you all being here. I appreciate you taking the time to be here and for you all putting on this event and for doing it a very professional way, holding us both to the same standards of time. I want to thank Ken Robinson for being here tonight. I'm grateful that he was able to share into this debate for no other purpose for me than for you to be able to see the very different ways of going about solving problems here in Charles County. Gratitude's a gratitude. Endorsements are endorsements. At the end of the day, you have to ask yourself if you're happy with the way Charles County's going. And if you're happy with the direction of Charles County, then by all means, I think you know exactly who you need to vote for. If you're not, then I want to make a plea to you and a guarantee that if you would take that opportunity and allow me to represent you as your commissioner, every day you'll wake up, you'll be proud of every accomplishment that I do. You'll be proud of the fact that way I carry myself and hold myself accountable to you and the service that I will provide. I will not walk around arrogantly as if I know everything. That's not my role. My role is to listen to you, the constituent, and make that determination based upon the majority of citizens here in Charles County, what is the best direction for us to go. I hope we didn't enter into here tonight to play a partisan game. I really didn't because that is one thing that I've had my feel of. I actually ran across one person that said, "I'm looking forward to working with my Democratic candidates or Democratic partners," which made me feel about this big. I'm thinking, I guess they don't want to work with me. When are we going to get beyond and above that and realize that when we are the highest taxed county in the state of Maryland, a state that's one of the highest taxed states in the country? Understand what that means for you. That makes you the highest taxed citizen in this nation. And for what? Do you really think we have the same services that are just right up the street in Prince George's County or even in Montgomery County or anywhere else across our state? I say it's time for that foolishness to be set aside. Let's work together. Let's cross lines. Let's find ways for us, now more than ever, to bring the functional leadership back to Charles County. Thank you all so much.